We see President Bill. It up and down, it say now working visits. I was trying to say the access alone police don't respond to the US State Department. Into US State Department and court amnesty. And so say he will not read the bet. Eh? We see President Bill, they go up and down, saying now working visits. Working visits. Now campaign? Oh, yeah, we don't work good, you need for go tell the people them. How good of a boss she don't be. But wait to. We see all the minister in there Vietnam. So now they all they do the working visits. Eh? They no get work for do again at town. And then they go the official motor car. Well, I think now maybe the name and working visits. Eh? I might be wrong. But. Let just it, nah, let me just it with your thing. Yeah? And one hundred percent, if you not agree with me, you fine. I think working visits. But nah. SIPP program. Because the president they work for we all. APC, NGC, C4C, nah, all money they work for. But this working visit who they see? It's like an SIPP program. Eh? So how the SIPP program be a working visit? What the working visit supposed for be? For everybody? For all man? Whether they for the party now, you know, they for a now. You say for able for get access and yeah. How good of a thing President Bill don't do? A working visit is different from a campaign. A working visit, it's supposed to be different from a campaign. Eh? But this one where they happen so now? It's like an unofficial campaign. An unofficial campaigning. One thing where I go like for seeing us alone. Yeah? One thing with me go like for seeing. When campaign ten come, let's do the campaign. But when the clock day you day on work hours, let's see you working. Let us see you the work. We no get nothing for do it. Political party politics. The same footing. Where President Bill they use? Now they be done they use long ago, now they still they use. What you I mean by that? Dr. Samura Kamara? It eh right now? The America. Then get town hall meeting, will be the show. Eh? Will be the show. The town hall meeting. It's supposed to be for all man. Not so so. For be for all man. APC or no APC? Everybody for able get access. Eh? For come and listen. But Dr. Samura event, it's like an APC event. Or you go say on a campaign, you can't for can't campaign, no, he call a town hall meeting. If in a town hall meeting. It for be an open call for everything. Even where they talk, they talk like say, oh, nah, every, but where you look on a APC event? Now make even when President Bill come America, go London, go any side. The political party best day, then things say nah, the president don't come. Nah, nah, they get the president. So nah, then they twist now, it turn. Political show. Eh? The mindset where we the people they say don't get see, where Samura Kamara, if they say people not go there. Yes. When President Bill come, well, we now know to where say people are ready for go, for go protest. So even now the diaspora, this is the idea we get. So in Sierra Leone, when I say the president they come, we like that. The political party best, nah, that tongue they, ready for showcase the president they come. And we look up. People away, no, they, we no did that party day. Eh? We no did that party day, go they say he, boh, nah, they did it. Even if you hang go listen. Even if you hang go, but again, President Bill, that one they they throw shade. Ah! Hmm. That one they they throw shade for us. I don't know if President Bill don't ever before, day before crowd, he not call APC names. Eh? I don't know. Even when the first lady they do the sanitary pad distribution, we look on like SIPP event. Where if we are blind, we go say otherwise, eh, because you know to SIPP boy, he did it. Well, we'll leave that discussion for another day. But me, you no see, it's green. Eh? Any Musa say, he say let you talk about the town hall meeting, no to true. He say because it be the talk about development, you hear the part where I talk see. Eh? The part where I talk see, even though, what he be they talk. But the surrounding, the nature of the organization, we come with ah, it's an APC event. Ah, now make I say, we no need for agree, me now what you I see. Now what you I see? Where the mindset of we right now see. Who size Samura Kamara had in, nah, APC people no more for did it. Who size President Bill didn't, I say people no more people for did it. If Samura Kamara, they try for beat. Eh? Let him find a way for get everybody involved. Yeah? That's what I'm trying to say. And they talk about waiting. Samura be they talk, of course, he Samura, I market to go sell. He was talking about development, yeah, he talk, he talk, he talk the whole, we don't hear he. I'm telling you about the setup. Now make for President Bill you. President Bill, I clean slate, I SIPP business. I SIPP business. Working visits, sanitary pad, um, um, thank you to all on I SIPP. And the people that wanna they support SIPP. They no go talk on nobody, they feel otherwise. President Bill come, add the diaspora, the one they wanna they support, instead of we go, let we listen, let we able ask question, let you no say nah, from this how they comment. No, we, nah, for protest against, nah, 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 for make you feel uncomfortable, let go back. Eh? Let go back, let go, let go back. How do we want to engage these people? When they really take we serious? We all know, nah, how they? The county where you do, the waiting, say, what they call town hall meeting? Know me, who da, who da, who da you they support, you they go there for ask question, they tell they bother you? Eh? Now you counting, now you they go for go talk about. Eh? Yes, Bangla they ask, yes, President Bill don't get couple of town hall meeting them. Like I said. SIPP event. This is something I want us to think about. You might not agree with me now. Eh? You might not agree with me now. But I feel say, this kind of trajectory, we need for change them. Everybody for get access. Eh? Everybody for get access, let's listen to these people, let we ask them question. Let no be like, ah, nah, we party, nah, we, nah, we candidates, nah, we, nah, we, nah, we, eh? You know why make ah, come with this? I don't know if you don't listen to waiting, the first lady go talk na Kailan. Eh? Waiting the first lady talk na Kailan. Then team need there, they don't pull nah, nah, by APC, look on man, nah, the team need there, nah, the APC again, like seriously? In fact, me, I know all I wanna make clear the official na Kailan, like seriously? Eh? No, seriously though. Now because of this mindset. Eh? We will get. Because of the mindset. Sametongankas say, he say there is nothing new about we polit, we politics, still old story, but we need for change them. Eh? We need for change them. Well, where they say Dr. Samura has, nah, political party, nah, he set up this and that, nah, market, he man can sell. And sell he can sell. I don't think say it want limited no more to the APC people. Because in speech way he give, not to APC people, he target man, the entire country. But they think where a lot of people, he say, okay, Dr. Samura, no to government official, no to waiting serve. Now so you they take graduate, no, where be President to man, nah, the same thing, we just continue. Eh? Now so you they continue. So nah, now you they make the change. Ah, well, let's alone there for us. We say not to say, say a trip lady, they talk about Africa, where you ask question, where they feel offensive to them, well, your family back home, go pay the price. Yes, Bangla say Samura adjust the. It just the. He only expect APC supporters there for vote for him. Let's think about it, you might not agree with me right now. Yeah? But I'll think about them. Hmm, I'll think about them. Everything no get for be party lines, politics, yes, nah, for the country, but no get for be strictly party lines. Now in a music nah. The way how you, you, how me they say right now? The political party them. This nah, the candidates. They can go to heaven and back, or to hell and back for them candidates. So because they no get access to that other candidate, they nah, this thing get access to, they no for do, um, for let the other one, they feel otherwise. You more the mayor. You more, the mayor. Well, now they you can, they say nah, time don't change. Hmm? But anyway. Things say, we need for, but now we the people serve, now we. I can't see. Nah, the politicians then, because now they create the atmosphere. Now we. I'm hearing this, now I'm hearing that, eh, it is what it is. Eh? Are we? The hostile, the hostile atmosphere. Now we need for change. Hostile atmosphere. Alec nah. Nah, President Bill come. Eh? Somebody who Alec nah, high act he serve. Nah, APC for able go inside eh, listen, ask question and come back nah do. But we serve serve, with all the comments then nah, yeah. People then they talk like say, no possible. Hmm. Now who they, who they make say Samura nah safeguard, Samura, you cycle and President Bill, nah, he, nah, President. Let's start it from now. Never know, who da go listen? And buying, and come, and throw in support. You can't just say we be gonna campaign, you limit them. Eh? Okay. Welcome, Ambarus friend, your summary for the week.
Yeah, thank you very much, Tukule, for giving the platform, thanks to all the listeners who appreciate to me, and thanks for talking through. Um, you talk about development and challenges, they will get quite a lot in our country today, how for address challenges is the big problem. In addressing challenges then, we will get a lot of problems then, especially how we manage the economy. But when usually they miss opportunity then, see, all man get political cure, because different aspects, all man they look out from different way. You see, when a government come, the first thing we do, no for develop based on, thing we put in my mind, say this not, nah, we mind. Um, you look at certain things and we reflect on the social life and the well being people in life. See, look at the rice, petroleum, the mines, and three sector yeah, we come, how they handle them. But when you look how this government come from two thousand eighteen, some of the similarities and they, oh, they see so say, they take some of the entire to action. Say, well, then why I ready for this, then why I no for do, nah, then why I do this? You get for take back for no, the balance, the profit, the cost, the benefit and the cost, oh, you get way they withdraw. And way they withdraw from something in terms of challenges, the way they try for get for address. And then during that challenge is the way they try for can't put in place, how you the policies then, how the system, what you go put in that law? Or how you go able put subsidies, who say you for put them, or who say you arrange for less subsidy, no, who boku? Or are you get for pull out? And when they pull out, you no get for the pull out, if you they get for assess, they, they look how things they go with the economy. But when you not look from that cost benefit area, you allow that economy, it become like a mockery. And which they have a mockery, we see the mockery come from even the media, the media, I mean, the, the, the social media. In the, in the seat back, musician, and they, then they make music, they will not discuss about artists, they don't sing different music. And they make that in a kind of a satire mockery, not for saying the mockery, and therefore remind them in the form of a mockery form. So you see all now, they, they expose that last part, they, because when you start up, you don't miss the opportunity, but see why we would for adjust. The way they withdraw, just like an example, somebody who they smoke ten cigarette or twenty, you know, see ten packs a day or fifteen. When they go tell you say left, they go tell you say left twenty all, and because they know see way he left that twenty, nah, bad habits, but the body don't use them. For like come upon that bad habit, count to the good one, you get for take a gradual, that syndrome, and I know that effect where the cost by you, I know you look to. So similar way in development, we they say, okay, no look if, nah, they mind yeah, the contract they been do, we no look for those two, we will get gradual load, we negotiate as we go. When you reach a stage now, if like the first two, three year review, they will know what go before, so when over then opportunity, ah, then boku really, we no to the normal other previous governments from them, when they do ah. So but in terms of now, they nah, go, they go before, drive for go now, who's route who they take, and then they ah, who they see say, the thing they will ever take things for say, as they are. They look at things that so they for day, oh, come, nah, so go for can do, nah, so they do it. They, but you know they take things, if for deal with them, how, how they do. And when you deal with things how they are, and how they for day, you say, you know, you know, we don't deal with it for say, as the, as then, as, as we always they say, the, 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 they. Talking things as they are, oh, nah, so it for be, no, if for handle them, deal with them, how they do. But when you take them hard, side they, nah, take ah, they go, but when they deal with their manager, I mean, it therefore put them in order, then you move forward for change all the idea, the way they bring so say. They are hostility, the idea for do this, the idea for do this. Look now the fashion, who they see now, a battle, who they go on within international relationship, in terms of diplomacy, diplomacy. So you look at the EU now, if reflect the EU, they see the PPA, they come up now, and get deficit of five million, one make case against the EU. Even at parliament, but on that parliament, we live for one side, now then they set a case for the EU now, nah, parliament for something. But that point they, where we left ah, no more, the point what I for take ah, here is, look at, um, in two thousand seventeen, there was a sixth EU African summit. And that two thousand seventeen, if you don't go vow say, then they do a business forum with we. When are United Nations Industrial Development Origin, what you for do? They say nah, overall money from two thousand fourteen to twenty twenty. But between that time, we no say, Bill, the President Bill, we don't go two thousand eighteen, nah, Brussels, would, he been go pan African and European meeting, we then been, yeah, the sixth one. Then we don't go promise about a hundred and eight million euro. So the last one, now we go, this one, ah, February, we are in the invite them, based on the conditions they wouldn't be don't put before. Based on the governance, I mean, the governance, how they govern, how the civil society, then they deal with and education, agriculture and food security. And how you we will do the infrastructure, then for developing, and put all it there in line. So they don't call them two or three times, you know, attend the EU, then in the EU, the EU meeting and that EU meeting together. But the point here is, these are things they would have done, they put in hand, and get eighty million for so, to support micro economy, and get different money, then the different things they would have done do. She don't go sign that things there, and then they ask you for do inclusion, and how you for able for maintain peace, and what in a EU respond now? And for say, when then political hit there, they come, in terms of how we the try for get challenges and for deal with them. And then we bring the atmosphere into political atmosphere, follow go fit yourself, how me nah, the big one day, nah, maybe don't they go there, person, I mean, no, what they tell me. And they don't go advise me against yeah, for manage the election, not to the money, no, what they don't go talk about, what me they talk to the father for go. No, the money was an arrangement, oh, we done they, from two thousand fourteen to two twenty, then budget out, so any face and they give them. So this is one thing, you go say, no, no to father fly go, but nah, for la go, listen, we say they will be go arrange, nah, he would they do. But no to now for begin, they say, Mula, he ride bicycle, he the Guayaquil, he did do this. But the point is, there was an arrangement, what we nah, we don't do. The people are they following the point of procurement. Procurement, it eh in different way, but this are the transparency, we ask, nah, open and fair competition, they day when they try for use them, when they would they give for procure. Waiting society forget, we ask those question, then we ask if there was a value for money, they put competition, we ask for bid, they not in day. If you look at the report for procurement, who that they did at the least, look what they do, look what they, even the independent donor agents, then they give. One bank get a list of them, would they, they no for do procurement with it. You get again, the government institutions there, you get the one there, where even Global Fund, we don't put say, how they put false bidding, when a one person to go award instead of bidding. This is same as idea, so you can for look say, when the money are the current, you have for looking to. If everybody are they get a report there, then they see them, then they see person, they run up or down, then they pay, and you go begin they ask, ah, man, they nah, nah, sacrifice, they sacrifice their life. Yes, it interfere, of course, because there is a limit with diploma, diplomacy they go on. But again, what in a the effect, you ask, say, what he go prove say, the man try for favor one side, is cause he bring this a point. But you definitely divide the law between, if you did the balance, eh, development, the challenges, they have a focus. That man, let right go, he ride one, let me not begin to go create a political hit again, these are international law, let me not go get case, you are going to go begin to attend. I don't know who size the case go draft tomorrow, we don't go sign documents, we don't go make an arrangement, there no people I don't give him money for spend ah, our go for interpreter. Now, when I the talk say, five million, nineteen years there for give, the balance money from a bank, because they no give this, that dispense. The man, he, 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 he don't go just say, he decide not give a money oh, because he no say anything, we read the Twitter, and they follow what they do. So but the point here, I try for arise, how they challenges there are, then we will for address them, looking at procurement, who are the most serious thing, we then get for looking to. Because they transparency and they no get permanent supplier, like a supplier as a issue, look at the issue of the dialysis nah, 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 cannot. Dialysis man, he for that kidney, waving, waving, who then be say, he day para all this, because the contractor, they say, they be they pay a money, but he stop, I mean, at some point again, he stop forgive. Because who that they put between, for like, who they pay the supplier, the supplier stop forgive, and they are like, ah, complaining, and so he left. So this is what we try for ask, are the right place, are the right product they can bring for we? Or are the quantity, are the right thing that they bring, or are the right customer? And then things that they get for look into, how we sort out this procurement, the law they day, the act they day, but are they been punished? How for crackdown? And they they crack and down, they ask if there is anything will have visible punishment to people, and we see say, and then they ah, who don't put in place. Recently, we talk about water, we they talk about water shortage recently, we see nah, media, yes, they come nah, you are heavy, they tell we ah, we get burnt, nah, disalination, who then they pull salt, and the water they make ah. Oh, but we get this, we get this, then government don't give this amount, but at some point, you come again, nah, the, nah, the procurement, recently, they say thirty two people eh, they no accredit them. And who that they thirty two people have on procurement? One man, then adjust this water, eh, 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 the, 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 the Salwako, eh, eh, the one they with, they charge of water for the whole country. So they no they give, eh, they no they, they no they become, they no they do according to what the procurement see, then just they go buy, then just they go spend, they no they know what they then buy, they no know what they then they spend. Now, they no certificates them, you know, they no, they no, they no guarantee, they say, they no get, they get for go through procurement, a lot of things again, all over recruitment, or whatever. But you they see how institutions eh, they are boasting they will get the money, they boasting they will get development, or they do the development, but the challenge is the how? But the challenge is, they have to address, they like, will be the poor man, who in the picking, you know, who struggle under for, go get pregnancy. People then go late for going to school, or picking, they go get infection because of the right type of water, or the chemical they would use, it's a lot procure, because even right now, then they complain still about salvation, both electricity and the, the, and the, then I, the one, now, when I greet them, when in the provinces, we see the whole seminar. The minister, they for say, well, I go arrange, like, what they give now, then the topic go around. But when they try for, look at the meeting, always you they see, how procurement, where they give service, where they go give money for supply oil? Where they will give up, oh, money for supply machine, then they would, they give them, electric grid, and then, and then, and then province. So the, the people, and they become adults. So you see, all this, they come, then at some point, then they drag, we say, no, everything is going right, we the get the money, and nobody never can tell what we do. And allow fight EU, then the money, they would long term, not forget about them. If I go arrange, we then not to them business, they US leader, and if for policy, this, nah, fragile thing, a hostile thing. Not to say, for below campaign on what you don't do, if people are not satisfied with what you do, well, we go, yeah, we go recruit to come back. But in anything, it depend on the procurement and the challenge, they say, how we will address it. There's quite a lot to go, we even see something, would, would happen, who not want discuss about her, nah, 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 nah. At the US, at New York, but I want this up to how we get, we get for the, the outcome of it. But we see again how things and they go on in terms of, um, o- other issues, then regarding, we don't bring come, in how then we challenge for the entire. But the point here is, the government try for look, how they will address the way for address the challenges they would in terms of development. The political promises them, when they bring come, for then they would be inside, you know, we just say, this and this and this. Because even the, the water business, they are strong ground, who then they go, for letting car help way. The, the, now, at the International Labour Organisation, who know deep on water business, with the migration, they did, and then they try for car inside with you. In the next meeting, when they for me, the, the water for day, but we not the complaint of solar energy. Solar energy, they use for make bubbles, which is good, for some areas, they would investment, then they go, the procurement, then I think. Who say, who for don't get ten, a five who they gets. So these are the things you talk of, so, so, for a man, they go Christy. So who says, maybe, the whole country, so say, for don't get, in a small nation, now a nation where, as long as the money, you know, who say, he will start new economy. The economy, now you therefore understand, because you not therefore, if for cancer, not protect the economy. You get for get a balance between, the one way, the bank, they balance, the one way, the markets, they deal with, the one way, the civil service, the one way, the government, they deal with, in a match middle. Now, what in the trip they do, and the first price control, then don't go, say, with the tackle, the price, the price control of the people who they raise the, 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 the business, or the price, and during Ramadan. So, okay, it's a very good idea, because our culture, we don't do, and for later culture, they, it break down. You get that government, for like, will break down that culture, they, you therefore get forced to, for user, you therefore create avenue, where in inflation, you go, how for deal with that? You they ask the investment, what I bring, can, it can for reflect on inflation, where in the foreign exchange will be okay? Or the investment, what I bring, now for let, he will get people them, when a public, or I didn't call them private, pri- privatization, would have somebody get her. He will walk in terms of inflation. So what are you focus on, that inflation? Because I will try for show the people, and see, this thing what I bring, now this and this, he bring. But I know where exaggerated this, I therefore should they say the outcome, because now matter of economy, now matter of development, but because of the, 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 the level of people understanding, we not go so blame, because of the culture they bring. When that culture, they therefore try and pull out, then continue for talk, as in the talk, as a people, and they learn. The people, and we explain, say, yes, now tell you, so they guess, who the month, now this and this. But in the beginning, what kind of percentage, you know, they understand, a similar issue, and these are the get problem between eighty and twenty percent of that tough business, where they can't build housing, now the country, in eighty and twenty percent, they not specified. For say, now we bring the host, or now we sell them, based on this. So then they just, they look say, now a formula, which is good, the formula for the middle, for the middle class. And I mean, the middle class, we get a salon, when you work at the ratio, they say that middle class, therefore creates the space for the people that want, they less privilege, because then they go take their money, and the one they want, they up, and they even for pay the price. So that man, then, then the government will profit that twenty percent for make for the poor man then. That was clearly brought out, because all they talk say, this is affordable buildings. In the le- lecture, and the speaker admire in lecture, that, that, that parliament, but the point for who people are not buy, is the percentage and the credibility of the company. But all now, and they, he will for can explain through the lectures, and there is nobody who's technical for go in detail, that building, I don't even understand if you be end of for pass, or they get for do the last, the reading. But the point why they try for say, how you are addressing challenges, we they bring private. Because if you try for look, say, any profits, now they make, now for relate to development and economic protection. You protect the economy, you give room for the civilians. So now that, I only get for say, they will leaders, and try for look into that one day, because there is quite a lot, we then get for look into. Certainly, when donor agents are involved, or certain things, eh, how you will convert that one day, so you will get a steady economy. Some of the things, that's convert them, we development don't steady. So you don't have agent money, who bother what I get, what's in the cars, grand, now you get for take, then you, you put in place NGOs them, how you will able for tap from there. But when you drag NGOs into your place, see, all NGOs in the car, all thing they pass there, and then UNDP back, get, then you method, they apply. So you see, you put policy for NGOs, you see donor partners, they pass through NGOs now, so, I mean, donor partners, they pass some NGOs, then we will not read that fact. So this is why you get for look at policymaking, especially when it comes to the economy. Not they are not doing well, your policy are put in there, for how the behavior, that value we get for humanity, that value we get for let people, and get one word. That value we will look, say, if I win, I win, I lose, I lose, the value we will focus on some people, it will pattern, for say, this I will do. Now, he give politician, we expect see that sign, and we try for look, let the country go before. Because when you look at the statistics now, and they try for, and the developer, putting statistics in development, thirty million US dollar, then they spread back, with the world back. You see, but all those money that they got, but in the end, then they try for say, that we now make, now government, see, you now we give, now this, we don't do like this, we don't do like this. If you put like that now, sometimes, there is something wrong, what's in the long game. But see, all the money I would give now, for develop the government, make things stability, saving the society, education, and because the education of the civil society, soon they develop. Then you try for create a room for them, we see even that, now the parliament, they say, the, the civil service society, then therefore get a platform, but they will get a saying. Who not they see how effective this will be, or let God make, all the challenges there, and put them together, channel them, so our development will therefore do in that country. So people, and we see development. Go on, and here, and I for that, and bring them, palm oil, cocoa, value chain, then put them there, now the loss, yeah, reason, now we give that the money. And that, you be, we see, small thing, they have, who then they both say, we sell palm oil, we sell this cocoa, but some of the industry, remember, that, like, the industry, nah, 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 nah. And, and, and Kenema, now one in the man, so they just boost a normal, now you go before. But we not see, what's in the government, bring us a chocolate factory. Then we ask again back, the other product, where they, we don't find, say, now good product for cocoa, who we will develop and grow quicker. They give for the empower the cocoa factory, because we don't see a whole envoy of cocoa, it been go now, way wise, it go talk about the challenges, and show them the method, would then therefore apply. Then they apply, but is it in quantity, now he would they ask, for let the economy go go. Thank you very much, let me try help for crackdown, some of them think they are how we before see them, so we will for see say, yes, there is something what they do. And then procurement is the biggest challenge, let me economy, not be so, so social satire, we see then they laugh we, and then when they mock we, then they react with fire for fire. And that not get for help, now only, not of, now, now, fried that situation, now calming down, get humanity, understand, people, how they behave. The each sector, united, bring on board for the development, would they? Thank you very much for stay awake, and thanks a lot for all you listeners and viewers, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, Usfend.
Yeah, welcome, yes, sir.
Alpha say thanks to Usfend for your contribution. Welcome on board, Alpha, your summary for the week, sir.
Yeah, and triple A, thanks for having me, you know, I will say, good morning, good evening, good afternoon to all the listeners all over the world. Um, my summary for the week, go go like this, I'll just wonder of what we talk on last week, or this week, where they done so, and then I will come up with two or three main points, then we, I think that is very touching for me. Um, we to talk on this, we, we, we did done so, we look at the high courts, the, the, um, inspect the chance rebuilding. Of course, we look at, um, water crisis, Nasir Alun, and then, of course, we, um, we, we Guma Valley, they say they need about forty trillion for solve the waters crisis, Nasir Alun. Um, also to look at, um, Edgar Fisher, Winadi George, order all the accused person, and for this chance rebuilding case, for make them surrender their travel document. Um, the last one we'll talk on this week, um, Dr. Sir Mark Amasig, who send we back to nineteen sixty one. Vassos President, Bill, say, mm-mm, mm-mm, we not for good nineteen sixty one, they say, ah, you don't do everything within, eh, this, eh, 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 APC for can do. Then you know, so what you make, therefore, eh, before even campaign, I mean, and challenge, I'm not for go, if I election, self again. So I thinking just one for go on opposed, and win this game. All right, that's now what we want to do this weekend, now I can't to what in I may take, something we don't do on this platform. Um, like I say, that big bring and come publicly, like God bless you, triple A, something, and they, um, this platform, they really, they make with the touch issues, they move. They really, really important, Nasir Alun, which make I say so. Um, we don't talk on this, um, PR system, we don't talk on that, we don't talk on them, people, and they for against, for and against. Today, or not even today, but I think me get them from yesterday, and I bring them up, yeah. The same, and, eh, eh, civil society, they move, the one, they would be, they support this, eh, PR system, oh, oh, put PR system. Some of we, we may get, I don't say foresight, we read, eh, buyer, do not look at any party, we bring some of them, they had now, and now they same civil society, I don't take them off, but say, oh. Now, now this thing come, now we attention, no. Now, I go, what you make, I say this, this, um, if you follow, eh, in this page, we family, and you follow this page, you go see, you say, they say, um, um, civil society, then they call for, um, the reduction of the threshold per the PR system, because that Lego affects the, um, the thirty percent of the, thirty percent quota for women there. And we don't talk this word, and I will repeat them back today, you know, so I'm telling you, we, we would talk, we would agree for talk, because we not support any political party, we not get any party in mind, so, okay, now this now, we can't support, now developments, now we own concern. When they bring this PR system, some of we bring them here up, which I may say, I will say I'm back. This PR system, now, eh, where, where it don't go, where don't, where, where, where don't pave for only two political parties, two major political parties, Nasir Alun. Which make I say so, the eleven point nine percent, where them people, we are put, say, nine at the threshold, the number person, the parliament, bam, they don't be law. Straight off, whether we like it or not, nine they happen. Now, civil society, they don't come, including, I will quote this, eh, eh, landed board, have that by, um, Ibrahim Tommy. In a one person, if you follow the, like, if you follow the, the Facebook page, or of, eh, AYV, eh, this one, you will for see, and I will page. They talk, I'm saying, yes, it's, it supports the, eh, the, the, the PR system, but what you they say, it's as if the PR system only make wood for only two political party. And this now, what we may say, what we don't see, I'm say, mm-mm, if they continue for push this PR system, so, it will bring problem. And the problem, what you would they say, when they say PR system, they bring, eh, eh, coalition, they make people, eh, complete, this, that. Now, the threshold law make I'm very clear, for like, one person, if I'm not talking of independent self. For like, gets eleven point nine percent for make you make an apartment. We now show me one political party, I mean, while apart from APC, SPP, we don't get eleven point nine percent. I will make mention of, where, where this thing, put to me, they up strong, I make mention of the C four C. When you combine C four C, that all them vote, where they get now, and corner, whatever, it does not amounted to eleven point nine percent. Not talking of now, you they say, like, i- i- it's really, really sad, when now, then they bring them up. And I saw, as, I, I enjoyed you the program to the extent that AYV that, the person where they represent ECSL, they don't make I'm very clear, I say, it will not be possible. Yes, the time where this team, they on the initial stage, where, where would they resident here, or people, maybe brand, where any carry. Now, when they don't begin, see the flaws of this PR system, they want for go back, then change them, or later reduce the, the threshold. It's not going to be possible, because this nine, they don't do, they don't set them all, yeah? So certain, then, and then where we the come up with issue, where we the analyze issue, let people not begin think, I say, oh, this, eh, they talk, and so turn up for political party, no. Way, no way, yeah? Now, whatever we look at, um, the parliament was still full of, with only two political party, because it's going to be very difficult for individual, eh, for sin up for making get eleven point nine percent, neither small, or, or, they say, they not call the small political party, maybe we call the young political party, yeah? For like, then get this kind amount of, eh, 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 percentage. The other, we didn't talk about, say, well, every home, um, every three person, where a political party, they put, therefore put human day, that is not a law, this not, the thing that will be, they said, Gary. So now, now, then they see the things that would they talk, I go to me next point, triple A, I wish we will get them for talk more on this one. The last one we'll talk on, are the human rights reports, the American Embassy, or America, the Numpul Leoniers, and then the Amnesty International. Interestingly, I download boots, and I try for compare and contrast, the two different reports them, yeah? And interestingly, will tell you, you know, when you look at the comparison, like, eh, 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 all the address, like, almost the same thing. Human rights abuse violation, and all these things. So if this government, or the police department, they come for, um, respond to the Amnesty Union. So like, when somebody, they ask, why they not respond to American Embassy, they, you know, why now only Amnesty? And where American Embassy, they give a report, they even quote Amnesty internationally. You know, certain, then, if we not be honest to we self, Nasir Alun, no matter what you do, we not go before. Certain things, that they, if we still want for continue for defend, 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 which changes, they begin from the mindset. If somebody, his mindset's not changed, any, in fact, now, what's in their mindset, now they leave. So if we continue for defend, then see, I would, then they say, not, ah, not this, now this, now that, not to that, trust me, we not ready for changing it. If we, the, the, the police department, for sit down and look at this report critically, accept their faults, they work on their weaknesses. At the end of the day, the global for like, eh, perform extremely well. But defending this one, we don't see, and parliament, the same to where they pull reports against, they said, and corrupt, then defend them at all costs. But yet still, with the see, eh, 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 corruption inside. So for me, it's not matter, it's not about defending, eh, 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 your, 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 your institution, it's not about defending the government. Go back, now, they go on board, watch, who say the person, then they criticize you, work on those areas. Now, I make one, and they criticize you, then they bring the point by point. Every way they do, you some, short summary on the, the presentation, typically, it's very, very clear, I mean, they go, and I saw they follow, and I, eh, eh, US State Embassy, the, the website, step by step. But today, you go see, follow number, you will see people, they defend this way, ah, they were, and I lied, and they lie, now this, then they that. Yeah, because the ball not on, the, 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 the game turn to them, and then get the good, waiting and call. But if the field turn the opposite way, when I then they chase the ball, now they will call for a free for, eh, eh, for protect them. And that's what we are seeing, if we not let the, this kind of thing, Nasir Alun, we are not ready to move forward. And you always tell people, then, they can't, when they, they went through difficulties, then get to to call them TRC report, or paper. Triple, every, and then they review that paper, this, every paragraph, that they show say, they follow what in they, so that they not go repeat, and do the same mistake, then they again. Now, I make them, you know, they not keep on at the shelf, they more, then they follow, and governments change, no government change. They not say they should follow the TRC way, eh, 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 report way, then get, that's how go, eh, eh, country they go. But we will, with TRC, eh, eh, report to side it, and then at their shelf, and then bind that, and they don't, they don't, don't, you don't. And you, you're not useful against it. I think now, and I'm you take for this weekend, I pray that next week, as we the going to next week, like God bless, we all, like God, continue for protect each and everyone, especially the one, the way, and show say, now, only, but, so, see, say, Alun, as the number one, please, thank you very seriously, triple A.
Thank you very much, Alpha.
You're welcome.
I want to say thanks to Alpha for your contribution. I will see. Now Saturday, now can there on Saturdays, eh? I will see. Now, again, it's, eh, you said we get opportunity for make your voice be heard. Call to the panelists, then first. Okay. Okay, Tony, message you. Okay, Tony, message received there. Omar, I didn't I do much. Phone line not open yet. Phone line not open yet, yeah? Yes, Omar, you get the platform, sir, welcome.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, my brother, and thank you for taking me call. You know, uh, well, thank you for giving me the opportunity for talk. Superly waiting you been to say earlier regarding family members and then they would on discuss that over and over and over and over and this show, where Inaga forever done. To me we in a diaspora. Me, now me or Al vice. If you allow to then turn it to a punk, one ten, two ten, three ten, four ten, now you don't look for that. Because you don't work hard for your money, I not care if now you more massive. You get for put on door, you see that you explain things into round, let alone siblings. Because are the most destructive one, the name in the siblings, siblings that the worst people them, right now, not the family. When you come to worry the diaspora, the old and see we. They ready for cause we not know enough for them, you give them not enough, you say long go do business, you know enough. The way make that ready for give back talk, so you don't reach to a time because some of we the work twelve, sixteen hours a day, you come out under rain, under snow. You not even get time for your immediate family, when you mind, you wear for you picking them. Then when you try for help, somebody do the end of the field say, you get money three in a backyard, it's about time for low draw the line. So if you continue got me such about went through that over and over and over and over. And this year, last year to this year, now this I said I didn't draw the line. If you wanna talk to me, if you not talk to me, that's fine. Because you not gonna forget, you not gonna make everybody, you not gonna please everybody, you will not want to talk to me, that's fine. You not one of the people that wanna go for worry about again anymore, so you not wanna, I don't check off the family. Now look onto the politics, something where we the mention, just know we be to talk about. How them people are the only rally there, people are within the attract. Sometimes they you not uh 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 blame the politicians them that much because just about the things that we you mentions, we you mention. If uh 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 Samura Kamal, whole of town hall meeting. The the people then premeditated, they'd already, it already programmed at the A P C business, I need a goodie. Might not be your whole town hall meeting. Maybe go a little bit better, because now the president. But probably you go get somebody who not to A P C go show up. But for A P C, in already get an A P C this now S F P P business, which is not supposed for be that way. Because check we on example in there. When eh eh Donald Trump whole rally, or or a whole town hall meeting, like then try the way Joe Biden, when first takeover that town hall meeting, we hold, I could answer about eighty percent of the people are shooting, not Democrats. Not Democrats, because then visit now the now the president, which enough for suppose for be so, but made a holy president i- i- and the and the and the opposition differently. The president in the end on the dinner, in a part of the nation. If I attack, if I go across the board and reach out to everybody. Talk about everybody, but not to the one who will get us alone, you they see where Joe Biden, the Trump, even when the whole town hall meeting them. Where we no say, most of the people looking at me, they get a Democrat point of view or them facing a Democrat, but where Joe Biden, they talk, he talk for the entire nation. How then go create jobs then, how then go make people in life then better, how then we talk, talk about social security, talk about terrorists, either it when they, when they address, they address, and they, you did not say, now the nation, it address, everybody. Except if you feel say now, not to me, they talk to me, because you know, you know, in 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 any, in any, in any talk between the what we want. But you know, we will talk about individual people and things that we don't want, but we on the Africa, a different. Madabio is different. Madabio from where Madabio takeover. Where you gonna stadium, where you go declare, they say, the entire A P C, he call them a nyampi. He call them a nyampi, from that day they head on, now he deep now. Any side he go talk, in a inch no more, how long you gonna put this inch? How long you gonna call people them, eh 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 the nation, they tell you say, we want for unite. You go, you go sit on a public television, as father of the nation. A a a a a journalist, or 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 a media anchor asks you, what in a relationship with the former president, you say me in not to pardon. If you say me in not to pardon, no. Because that man they be one make let her hold me, just actually no evidence. There's no evidence for saying honest by Chrome, I say let her hold you, they not even hold you. They said I'm go check now, I owe for say you get balance stuff, you know, whatever, they not hold you, they not put you in a jail, they not arrest you. So why you hold that as a grudge, where you now, you not the president now, you now with daddy, now we would look to we all the creating for listen to your voice, but just like when you go left, you 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 newborn to a babysitter, or you pick it to a babysitter. That can't wait, you can't for can't take that beginning, you they see that beginning, they run for jumping to you, like say the babysitter, we do about the whole day, now so we they, when we are really what we they, we they, we they, we they galvanize, when you tell the nation something, then they believe you, then they hold on to you. Because you not the father of the nation. But if you don't begin the 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 whole enemy business, that is not to be pardon, this eh eh not the former president, no matter what you look at her. You know, and when Ebola be there, the man can call you from London, come, say, yeah, I can't help. Where you get you on, you not do that, that's fine, that my own prerogative, you know, but now, now you as the father of the nation, now, yeah, you allow, you have you have the dig, we we talk now about travel, is we see what in this thing, what it do now, we wonder. For this woman for go to na 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 public, he hold a mic and talk say, now so so timidly. He even make a reference to uh 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 that man, what's in the in himself, uh 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 Mister Tunis. Yeah, is that Tunis now the second list, in them not be they said now the fourth list. Now in the only South Indians, only Mendeman, now, now forget some, they forget. They forget, now make them put in him now the second list, in them not be they said now the fourth list, how you go talk so? What you they try for create? For can't put we go on trip and war and run go to Gambia and go sit on there, because that happened. You they claim try, there was something happen now we country, you say you not to civilian, you not Gambian. Because now they that he come out, you run go sit on there, that actually they try for do again. For cause chaos, now we country, then you run back, you deny yourself as civilian, you go sit on a Gambia. You can add that you do try, I don't see a video, it's a way they talk before Madabio can a power set. He declare himself as Gambian. Now when man don't win, he don't come. He try for cause a chaos. Now we, now we country, then you run back, you go sit on a Gambia, you declare yourself again, you claim for being a Gambia, because that is that he come on. You can be a Gambia, because Gambia, they local for that, just like we on. Why, why, what in the go on, why this man not for able for put this woman do, and tell and say, dentier not good, but instead of don't talk up. What they ask and try, they madabio, she don't have TV, talk say, where people that we don't divide with, why they get too many lying, they get many lying. You know, when I mean Joe Biden talks, hey, that we don't divide with, because they get the south, they get the southeast, or they get the Midwest, and they get the east, they get the the west. So that we don't divide with, England, we've been, we've been colonized, we don't divide with. But now that Madabio talk, like that same ninety-eight point one, it's a white people that we don't divide with, we already divide. So you self go along with that, instead of you as the father, so when you meet you picking and the fat. You went side one side, yeah, you said side one side, saying now so we don't do now, you like the boy picking, me like the girl picking, all sit down. Where you not go try for make peace, find out what in the go on at the house. Now the thing is all they talk about this with president, where people in the top, people is they not like this man, oh, now leader, now for expect, now they not a costly leader, but leader not know what to do, it to me, it completely lost, it it lost now the economy side, it lost for bring the nation together. It not know how for bring this nation together. But when you not know how to have for bring the nation together, not put fire again, but anytime with this president, then gear a mic, now you for be, even if now things that what they say about you, what they talk about you, now you get forget that soft tissue. Because now you not the daddy, now you, everybody they look to, when you hold mic for talk, and when you turn up, now S L B C, they talk everybody, why, what you they say? Even what in Tranga, you they able put color tan of people in heart, because when Team Tranga come, talk to the people that would sincere. Tell us, I understand what I've been, Team Tranga, walk the other day, because we not get investors away, they can, and the reason this, now this reason that civilianians then go forgive you, then go believe you, because they not say they try. But anytime where you come, you did a job, you did throw a job, like say you run away by your problem. You they blame, you don't they blame this one, then this one group of people for the past five years, you still they blame them. And things that let it go right, right now, in the past month, long council, people let they walk around, a fruit or spoon at their pocket. Who said they meet, then they cut fast, no more, they joke inside it, and that's a Eddie. They jump inside it, they maybe wait for them to call them, then just they jump, then put spoon, they eat, because Team Tranga, not in all day. So talk to the people them. Let the people that know, so now this they go on, but anytime where you come, you they try for brag. You people are way they send, oh, then they brag, how you don't do so much, now now buhnya he the gee. When they talk about you too much fly one, for you as a leader, take, look what in Ghana do. We're gonna, that man be they get pressure, what he do? He cut down, he then cut down payment on 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 the cabinet minister, them all eh president eh political appointee people them, they chop chop down, they slow things down. Ghana will get eh play themselves for themselves, I know people say that Ghanaian president, they fly a bit too young. How you gonna do that, then when they talk, you give the people a back talk, you go down in a back talk, they say they fly too much, they eat in a bag, you say, I will continue for flying. When they say you not do enough, you say, ah, me I don't do tea, I don't even do not buhnya. Well, what's in at the buhnya, not in all day, what the buhnya, what you give me, Mister President? How you go do this to the people them, where you come, it try, they say, oh, now give me work, go on, I give me the work, I go work, the work. Now the people that don't give you the who's this work. You cry to them, then give you the work, now now you work you hold at the, now you are now, now you give them back talk. Let God make you continue for give back talk, say, you go who say you go for end, because this not right. How you go continue for give, the people are what you work, this now your people them, they may not speak Limba or local or or maybe with you. But now civilianism, and then they suffer, walk not day, forget but Forget but eh 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 eh, deny the law, forget but pre-education right now. Forget but eh 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 eh, death penalty, create jobs. Create an enabling environment. Easy how for do that, lower taxes, cut down taxes. Give this Sialonians them, where one can do business, tell you politician and let them pull on behind them. Let them come up behind them, but they attack them. We get a lot of we brothers and what they go for go do business that's alone, they only turn back, they cry, then they tell, look that we brother, we come what na na London. We go for go do business. Here Nigeria man get problem, they take the Nigeria man over we own brother, take the man in things them. When I turn them to leave the room furniture now in our office, she don't pay the money, big the, a man work in morning in London. Now so now for three two people them, they won't not in a power now go, she don't back the talk. Like God help we, but this man something not right, and this not, you know the three people in this way. You know, the people and they cry, so either way they do so, you still see, people and they dance for you, and they dance behind you. When you come on, look try they picking, they almost want go die. You say, after we don't give the other sanitation part, and you say the folk can't tell you take it back. And you they know even, you know even coordinate that any good way, they can't they tell some almost died it. That just tell you how people they like you because, not because you fine, but that because you na the father of the nation. People and they look to you, like I picking, they look up to him daddy. Now make them picking and you all run count to you, look what in the face for shake your arm. Or you take that for granted, or you you to take advantage over that. Let God help we, thank you very much, me brother.
Thank you very much, Umar. Now see if Tony done already, if not. Ezekiel, are you back? Hope see the mother line that treats you well. I'm gonna answer you. You wanna be apart. Hello, bring come Tony. Welcome on board Tony, what you na you in summary?
Yeah, um Abraham, thanks for having me, Kusha and Cabo family. Yeah, you you got the. Um, yeah, family man, Kusha and Cabo, I wish you all a blessed weekend. Um, you know, as usual, you know, making very critical in me own analysis, you know. I just advise for the two political parties because basically, SLPP and APC, I know who lack wants to be the longest. And the way we make see people then they say things is like APC, me don't come on the decades. APC just come on the yesterday, it not even five years it. You understand what I mean? And 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 we may expect this problem with the people in the face so, me I can talk ah, you understand, you like me, you not like me, God like me. APC was there when I for don't change things around, you understand, now they would be all like, hey grassroots party, grassroots party. Even they your members then and differentize them. You understand, and we still they pray for them, and other people they still they pray for them, let them come back tomorrow. Me now advise me they give the political parties them. Because we politics now salute, now do me I do you. Falamakata or you do me, I they can't do you back and everything, most of the things they would is who they happen so. We the cry for water, we the cry for hospital, we the cry for basic things then, APC was there. We the beg, whoever we go for win the election after June twenty four, make it try for correct things they do. And now some of the things they need to get will make, then change APC. Me hope say if they get for win. Or wherever we win, SFP for this, let the people be first. The people get for be paramount, these are the two party, they not say what they did, then they change. But so like what they, he they always this they change, past this, 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 this. We still kind for the basic things there, they must say SFP they don't count twenty years, no. Government and community, now we the cry for what Saturday, they would discuss about what's our crisis. Any lay down plan day, where APC me left, we go say okay, now this then me left, where SFP, SFP card, they say go take. And then they would vote for them back, or people that vote for them back, let them come. So we go for they talk to we political parties them. You understand what I mean? Even when we to talk about, we middle level map ah, at least where Abraham they talk, we middle level map are very, very weak. Most institution, any of them two party, I don't say okay, me, I the take this institution yeah, make a focus on the youth them. Make I develop the middle level map power to a to a point wherein, if foreign companies then come, oh they preach say eh local content policy. We people then go be number one as priority. But most times where they the skill gap no day, the skill set no even day, for certain jobs, they would put in the, the 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 companies that they carry. Go out your mind in a corner, see how many foreigners and where they they went, they operate eh dumpster. Where they handle eh areas and when a technical areas, where we young people are for able for handle. We don't have institutions them, we go with trade with middle level map power. I think so we go for do a forensic audit, and now we look who's how we follow, and now we able for correct things. APC and SFP, these two parties on there, I mean, we the cry for basic things, just that they really feel it, some basic things the way we all who there so so within the. Now western world, we enjoy those things. That's when our tempo once start, follow see people in the god in Libya, not for, not for four years it start, this thing have been ongoing for over ten years. So therefore talk to a political party, if you be APC, you be SFP, this time around, which party ever we come into governance. Let them focus on the agenda, let them focus on the ball, let them, the ball is the people. The people have name of paramount, the people welfare name of paramount. The only way they fed, so everybody we can offer a family, just like how we the see what see that piece where SFP. Now the same thing, anybody we come just not, now it's a force, because this whole thing have been, do not take it as a business. Say invest ten thousand dollar, I forget fifty thousand, or I forget eh fifty, fif- fif- fifty million or a dollar, or whatever, I get forget format. So we go for focus, we where the me 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 point see the way I they make. I know I for know which political party you sympathize with, you be SFP, you be SFP, some of who, any party work out their benefits. Some of where PC don't get granted aid, SFP card don't get granted aid. Even when we go for it also, who need paper work or this or that, we decide who they do, who they get through document because we 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 be involved, we will be, we will belong. But for the layer man, we we want we continue for let further, we want to continue like develop. Sickness, sickness and look the camp, sick the way they kill people in our salon, that's what today it start. You understand, so let we, let we think back, even when we in the dance floor, they support political parties then, make we the foster solution to certain problems. What we get in our salon, because the only one they fed for so, hey, two thousand and seven, now so people are fed back for the same APC. Then come at the end of the day, some with some good projects, and then we take today the road, and as by Koran, I go with the road, we applaud them for that. And we say something we the express, even the better bill regime when he come, then go make other, other projects them, just like when they say the, the quality education and all that thing. Pay priority, even the agriculture, they should have put more pressure, more emphasis on agriculture. Because we basically what see the apple, we get on a favorable balance of payment and trade, because everything are we country, we the import. Everything we the import, so we the spend more money than more, but than the revenue who they get. How many people they can buy from we, we not get companies, we see companies that we come. We not even they do background check, we not even they do eh due diligence, before this party say, oh, they can't do business, and that's the same problem, this government save they get. We see somebody who can follow we, say they can make a York City or this or that, we know they do due diligence, we go for they do background check. We are things for another, as you go connect, and see these companies have been there for decades, the ball I can, they still they. Crisis they not can work, crisis they still they, why? We know for they copy best practices and see why make some of these companies, the way we can or we country, some not even get any succession plan. In case there is crisis, when you're doing business, you see that profit's a loss. And when there is profit, you always save from your profit as reserve, you have some, you the show as dividend, so you share all that. Then you the get a reserve in case of crisis. Where you go say, okay, crisis done, we not they make returns, so we not they get eh profit, but now we go tap from a reserve, and able for pay staff, or able for sustaining business. But whenever there is crisis, some of this company who without one man business of where one human normal. Go fair come you counter, crisis can no more, it just run away, it go. It happened to 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 London mining and African mineral, they talk party agents who them they work with. Where you go say out source company, they will be they provide some other relevant facilities, like somebody they provide transportation and everything, people then went to the bank, they secured loans. Then come they are just full one money, no more, they go there, so, oh, eh market price drop, this drop, this drop. And people are there, when are indigents, they've gone to the bank, took loans, they just left them from crisis. Then when I went on, they just go, he just say, no, say this party eh 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 Tunis, Tunis don't sell this company, don't go, no. We go for do due diligence, even though we want companies for come, but now we not just open, we 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 foot like a lager gal. Anybody they can no my can inject, anybody they can no my can inject, we go for they do background check and say yes. That's what because we want money now, everybody they can no more, they can, they they can abuse me. Then they happen now we country, every investor, foreign investor, we can, they abuse we and abuse the people eh, they abuse the country, abuse the local eh. Because we say, now we don't sell, we back threat for cocaine, we politician eh. You know they, you know they, you know they, you know they, you know they say, oh, this is SFP number on IPC, no. Even if it's the communists, they know we come. Where now money, money commission, commission they put before, no cost now one, West London, Maryland two. I get a friend with them go to come in our salon, no cost they ask for for for, they ask for percentage, the business now even commence it, and it still happening under this government. So the them foreign, them still no go for the correct to government, they say, we we were there that they asked for, so man get the contract, so man get the ability for get investors, they for take them down our salon. But this commission, commission, business now even started, who now they do, who now they in that phase for 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 start. Commission, this act of commission, this act of commission, who not even started yet. And that's what say, nah nah, SFP number they do, APC say we the do. So even when they talk to we political party, oh, they support to political party, for me then come into governance, we have to talk to them, let them know say. This is not about you, your benefit, it's about the nation's benefits. If people that can open communities in another country there, when I make Guinea, they flourish more than we, there's much more revenue because there's income tax. And so many taxes, you go for a profit tax, sales tax, all this tax, exercise duties, so you they make more revenue. Then they pay the workman a back, you take income tax from the back, the workman has a favor for take care of the family because they are in job. But when we they think about we serve, we serve, we serve, all this style, all this issue, all this story this issue, now salon. The public transportation, invite them, grab them, go by one hundred buses, everybody go on the 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 bus station. Now you see them bus and they crack us, nobody know they give accounts, check the money, where, where the pass regime spent for transportation, public transportation. They say, oh, salon, eh, we government now say we do business, we say government now say we do business, who's can, now big food talk around eh. Now because of corruption, make somebody to go talk with niivos, or or not get sense, also negligence, oh, government now say we do business, government not for business, man, who's that mean? Are you kidding me? Then you go put people, why you the appoint people, they say you na, you na MD, you na CEO, you na director general, collect cash, you know more, they eat fast, fast money or salary. Then you the talk say government not say we do business, why do you give them jobs, if you not say government not say we do business? So you can't put the normal, let them they eat government money, like I said, I tell them coma, because I tell a life machine, you live for life support. This government take one hundred and seventy million dollar for invest, for expand them, these are opportunities, these are areas, these are great areas. Look how much our orange they make, look how much Afri-Sel they make. And they eat two people, they almost, and they eat one, just data, we just we own company, this is a national, we, in fact, they're they're the brand or copy line, say we own. You see government officials, then they use Afri-Sel, and they use Orange, the other man you say I got sell, even with this government. So we know they learn first, we own a lip service, lip service, lip service, lip service. Then we get the national agenda, when are the people's welfare, when are the people's welfare? Bonna market rights are fast monaster, look the prices of commodities. Look the prices of commodities, other people, they they have the opportunity, they have the upper hand, because that's when government they pay, they don't wanna do business. Because who is that said, the president, this government fail, so they go see, say, oh, that I don't know say we do nothing. When your governments come, you want to, when we there in governance study, that's how they pray for like this government, that's how they begin on the man, the other government, lifestyle fail, so people then go see, they say, oh, this government are effective. So we the prayer, we don't need for almost here sixty, almost here now, whole guy independent nothing. You go meet to my guy, now the same building, they went with one they left, you go up to a big college, okay, one to probably one dollar. You go on the institution, they check, I found out the only one where stand out, don't put buildings. No infrastructure, all the things, the way the white people then, they left for we, we cannot create, we cannot think outside the box, we cannot initiate things. Always they talk about leadership, you come with initiative, it costs empathy, because when you see people, now speaking to the big, then they suffer, you the think sorry for them, and you the bring ideas. How should I changes people life, what else do I need to do?
Or you fumble in business, you forget what the government they lost. That that didn't happen, we spend more than we did, we didn't generate. So we have in deficit. So if if got them and foreign aids and when they come, normally can add the government. Things for the worst possible, then glance and end the whole day for the worst possible. We call one for spell like that so we get. Mister President, you just said that for check you, you, you traveling. It was too much, it was too much. The country now, the world advanced, that's such a thing that they are too virtual. That's why you therefore go say, ah, I therefore go there, I therefore go there. It cost the economy, it costs to the government, like serious burden because every time it travels for the air. So now they make us say, but now we go long ago because drama they be on that, that why it's for the air. But you can save that cost, sit on our office, do virtual, other president, the way now they go, that for say, they're not invited, they're not invited. But the process they felt by, by, by technology. This is like tech world where they live now. You don't need for go there every time because every time when you go. Now more people there, they go with, you don't forgive them for the air. You don't forgive them something, you don't go take hotel, you don't for charter flight, you don't for do all that things in there. You don't give for things say, the one they were made in at this, 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 the, the, the people that food them. This, this, this modern age now, people do not wait for, 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 for excuses. People want results, people need results. And the society is such as for salon. You spend your money, not as political party, don't go eat your money, don't vote for you, the people get sense now. The people really smart now. When I for land and they say, every city do the same thing and ship tickets, then give money, but people reject them. When they're going to develop works and vote for now, so now they've found out fix the problem. When another they give people their back truck, we come to reality, a lot of arrogance, people that they talk, they back talk. Who all left there, why they, why you talking about, say, oh, this is the A P C D. Why you talking about, oh, that is S A P P D. Now, man, they focus, 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 you know, we, we, some of, we, we don't pass forty years, we don't, we don't, we, it's their interest on politics. Just and give you the enabling environment. Just give you the enabling environment. Chinese man, when he goes to outside, now they look for employment, they look for deployment. Some of them have deployment who they look for, when they look for employment, we just wind down with space law, we do your own business. Obviously, now the focus, we definitely focus on the economy, the people, nine of the, nine of the main goal, nine of the main thing. Just like I say, every city come back tomorrow, they do the same mess again, with the cry, with the cry for water today, with the cry for, 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 for basic things there. With the cry for water, like life today, with the cry for other things they take today. I mean, it's too much, before that, now ship them and they left, give you, they were herself, they take the ship, they, they just turn the people into buffalo. Where, where this, it kick ya now, now they kick ya now, so if people do not turn buffalo, the people that are the body, they never kick, kick there. Okay, it's, I mean, I mean, I mean, now we can't, if some of them, now we can't, we like. If they go there two three times for the year, now what's the amount we get, it's sacrifice. What they bring sacrifice, sacrifice, now when you get love for something, some people that know that, that's why I'm not saying someone, one go. Okay, God not down the opportunity, but some people, where, where they go, we have to, we're making that sacrifice, now love they make, who they go down there. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not easy task. So many, so many pressure, when you go down salon, one the way they do, let God bless them, when they go salon every time, let God bless them. While they tell you for go salon, now last big sacrifice, when they count love, if you not get love, you never go, we know people that went and talked about it, they talk. They know every go salon, now talk no more, they are such a me that they talk. They don't ever, if we, we stand in a skitter for one week, then they run away for commodity. You know, and the people that gave their life, less than eight million population, they suffer every day, you're going to market to the different price. Every time people that we ask, this is a give back talk, everybody is just arrogant. I mean, some of them will not care what that way they empower, just go with space, we have space we want and create free opportunity.
Thank you very much, Tony.
You are coming, bro.
I take five calls. Anything goes. Five calls, the phone line open. When I think so, don't do well, then we can leave here. I take five calls. Phone line open. Please don't stick to the time. No, it's okay. Who do I already talk to?
Yes, good evening, this is Mans.
Mans, you get three minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Um firstly, I want for tell you plenty, thank you. Um relating to um businesses, you were talking about the middle class and all of that for businesses. Meaning key, the first factor I will put into all of this, not dishonesty. Especially when it comes to people that really request support from the diaspora. You know, we get fumbling over this, as we the acts, the mayor want to do this business, I want to do that business. Now dishonesty are the first place. I remember once you talk about transport business now, so. Almost people, you know, we don't put some on transportation, we don't say, okay, you know, it's in, this may fumble the under, you know, they work in routine. Now buy one or two motor car, then they go now. What's in the happen, a disaster. They pull all the money they be, right? So that's now one, then secondly again, we therefore look at the educational system. How much focus did it put on training people in for become entrepreneurs? I don't think say, yeah, it's much going on, honestly. Because for now, you see, even people that we go school, say, if you really do business, you they ask, they were so then go school and all of that. And the main, the other main important aspects on that, now the access to finance. You know, over them, over them places, you see, passing, I mean, it sets up in L L C. It gets all in documentation, it gets in business plan and all of that, it gets access to finance. But that not available, the last money they why I say, how they bring come for it to people, they must loan and other things then for set up business. We know how they ship them money they be. We know who say you for belong, for let them ship them money they be. So all of them factors and they put into place, the middle class therefore survive. Because they're not honest, they're not they get the rights training, they not get the access to finance. So all them three factors, they really contribute seriously for they, we not see people in the progress in terms of business, not the economy. Then you will talk about also the um, the human rights report. You know, i- i- it's sad, doctor like you see, if you respond at young risk. When a data city salon police to show, they respond at the young risk. Because always in the inside is so, it difficult for them in any tangible evidence for contradict them. You know, in order, the evidence not there, we go contradictory within American embassy, so they are making governments and the human rights, eh whatever, Amnesty International, Sinai. They not there, they're not gonna have evidence there for contradict them. So it's, 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 it's so shameful for let it come out and bring their weak, weak defense they be. Then before I do, I just want hint of within Alpha, see, we will talk about the P R system. You know, I remember when I watch pass its program them, we, Ibrahim Tommy, the first thing we talk, before beginning conversation, we talk see. Inappropriates of the P R system, which means it supports the system. For so, so reason, for this reason, for this reason. But I was shocked for see Ibrahim Tommy this week now, T V A Y V, they talk see, how they need for changing laws then. Because no smaller party, no good meets the threshold of the eleven point nine percent. For say Ibrahim Tommy, now we know now one day, you know, we know all this while. I remember we see we are blind and write something, we talk see, parliament some pass something that is scheduled. We, now the roadmap now, one day for P R system. Ibrahim Tommy, he still supports P R system, now now he conscious, this is one of the biggest hypocrisy them. So when you see the government, they misbehave, we get them small, small structures, they are waiting at the system, we for be effective, efficient and, and, and be objective. Now, them don't let the people end down, now them they misguided the people that are not considerate. It's a shameful that they come up and talk so, you know, the bottom line of P R system, not dishonesty. They not bring and come for any honest objective, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, Mans. Yes, caller, who do I already talk to?
Yeah, Star Trip, yeah.
Yes, you get three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, Star Trip, listening as, we all understand, what's everybody getting responsibility. Where we need for carry, this responsibility, now we all on field today, makes salon, they are in this room. The leaders then, with the commanders and all other people that we dinner salon. But we reflect reminding, the past governments, these two parties, they are not the top got in a salon, the A P C, S L P P, they're all salon, the longest time. Um before S L P P they come, A P C million power and it's called workout, free health, we let a Quran say free die. Because people are the misuse, the opportunity, we that they bring come for we. When you check the doctors, the immunos, is the owner salon their pharmacy. When drugs they can, they are taking it to their pharmacy. So before she go now, they will take she makes, you know, the Cuban pharmacy, and at the pharmacy that they direct you. Madabioka with free quality education, food project can send this, they share unto themselves. So we the people in safe get the responsibility. Who we did, they say, who did they call me back, he say for the same water, make the politician, they take we say, we say self no serious. Who politics then reach, take out money. You they give you for give one bag rest, buy polo for you, go not three to dance, buy rum, they give you drink. All the people there, they get the talks, the only party that get the talks, they already follow that. I mean, often the family don't benefit, they name leader there, who did the follow, none. Go on, then they go send, go corrupt, go feed fat and add, then of the day, they say, we'll go free you. But what you the gain, what you don't put for your future? We go for conscious, especially with the youth, we go for conscious now that country. Through the cancer, maybe, also people like a comments, look that quarter, what we did. It's, it will take a thousand of years before salon, we go member, or we show of the opportunity, you know. Not to the business, I know all the people that will, because we the Fabian, because we mind concept the way we get, not go for work. To leaders then, to we the people then, the lean people then, everybody's corrupt, everybody's corrupt, my salon. So we, which we the try for see, the solution in there. But who do I go can put this solution for later, salon, they put lots in another very, they did not make other law, they put to delay all you. Where A P C million power, what they say cleaning, what they holding, they define, you say, you thought the people didn't take account to get, but if you, the minister human do the thing. They not, they not go now, so the next people back go do them, so they learn for one, they stood, they did the work. So you fall that, that moment, the way they hold you so far. After that, everything is down, talk was three, three, the woman they talk. A P C because they put people in a bachelor, but because of politics, see, they are the now they vote for we. They left when they come, even they build market for them, they are not going there. Still in our streets, S L P can do the same thing. So these concepts, they will go for change, we will people then, the leaders then, they will go for, say, don't say, okay, we now continue this, so we all agree, you know, they push law by. See, the, 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 the commander, they take advantage. Or watch, like all the other caller they say, check all the government institutions there, if you want good school, pass you go private school, you want good hospital, pass you go, go, go private hospital. Everything but government not working, no money to nobody, what they kind of power, they draw their friends, they draw them this, not to give the job to the right people. Give the job to the right people, forget about politics, if this man say, now medically, no, put in America sector, not take agriculture, go there medical. It's a physical, we do the nothing. So this is not the problem, we will go for trial for certain on this country. So move for do out there, both family then did it. If it's a long point, they, we say we fulfill it, because people then did it, we go for good it, I do, we will get time and do, we enjoy with life, our want and not to have the country all day and for car, for people, for with man. You know, who the fill them, who the fill them, some of the opportunity who the guy, we have, no, they will get in our country, who they fill them. But who go can solve this problem for we, if you not for talk, we don't talk, we don't do this, we don't begin to. They do, they do listen, then say the character, they continue, they are the same, Sabu Bananga America, so, you know what's in there, you know what's in the city. Unless me to go America, you don't leave overseas, Madabioka leave London. But why you don't can be president in the country, all it's in there, one, I know the practice, they couch, they're small, small on our country, employment rate. I'm a focus for one thing, okay, unless don't can, at least good, you make good roads. Okay, if you say can, left something where you come out, legacy, would other person can see, now this missed man left. But everything is just upside down, everybody's fighting for his own pocket, fighting for his money, money now, you don't get, you don't get more, right? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, yes, sir. Don't hit your number, the phone line don't close, yeah? Yes, Mo, you get three minutes, sir.
Yes, Trip, good evening and good evening, everybody, and I make like Saturday, Saturday is always hot, you know. Today I blue minded, and um, which is very good for we all, because we all know, this is really, we all love, now all it's up for. You know, um, go back to um, Samura Kamara and President B O, you know. Um, we, um, brother Omar, earlier comments, we mentioned President B O, say, go sit on a, um, that town hall. About a, a Samura Kamara and, and um, former president, and it's by Koma, you know. And making sense, if then people are, now we didn't is stupid, you know, because President School, President um, B O. Ian, Doctor Samura Kamara, now he's in church in the go, and if I could recall, um, last year. Um, in the same President B O, donate money on behalf. Samura Kamara, oh, for Samura Kamara, on behalf Ian in family, for Samura Kamara, now in church, he donate money for that, all of them buy cement, or what they call. So if then they do things then, now we then they try for stupid, we the people then, because now we always dance for them, you know. Um, go to the um, the um, the Amnesty International report for the police them, just like way another caller say. Um, the police them for pull a car, report the counter attack, Amnesty. There be putting, they any right to report to for they not get evidence, that I believe, they need the right to report to they not get concrete evidence against them. But why now, make question get, why now the police then they can't get statements? Because Amnesty International, every year, they need pull reports. From two thousand and seven, we, um, former partners by Koma, then we the pull reports. Take count to twenty twelve, then they pull reports. But why the police do not ever go and make or pull a pre statement, counter attack them, why? Why now, why now, they, they thinks they did not, they bias, the people and bias, why now, because I say something to them. You know, but one thing that is saying that I country day, you know, we all get one in, for see salon grow. You know, for see the betterment for salon, for we all, and we picking them, where they come. But dear, are the big civil union then, dear, are big, no we put salon force, no we left the selfishness. Only one day where they go dance behind Samura Kamara, now town hall today, not to salary and put before, now they safe. Now they safe. Then they go for guard, identify they safe, police Samura Kamara see them. Because tomorrow we win, and then they go put in a position. Look, President B O administration. Who do I, who do I go change the money? Who saying come out? What's a professional American, yeah, Professor Carlo? What's in come on, I go salon, he say, in a, in a, in a professional economics, of economics. Eh, in come on, I go, I go salon, for go change my economy, and the only way go change the economy, now denomination, you know. And um, it change the notes, now you know, I, the notes don't left, who say you don't go, we don't know. Now the country, the economy just, just wreck, you know, the dollar just they go up like that. Who that cause that, now diaspora, check all the offices, they wanted to do well in a salon, now diaspora is in there. Because guess what? Then people have, we don't put money for them, actually, they are, and matter of you know, give us a credit. Because we don't get money, we don't get money, I still need the money back, and they only contribute. So then people are a lot of salon, now they accept the law. So we will love salon, dear, now we talk to we people in down yonder, say, make they avoid particular. Make they avoid this barbaristic business and votes for issues and policies. They deal with the beginning vote for issues and policies, see. The past government, the government don't pass ten years, we not get twenty four hour, what time, we not get twenty four hour light. And this back and long come, the only thing they can pay for, now education, and education is a phenomenon. The education is a phenomenon, anything they can pay about, you know, but then they keep for disgrace themselves. Go back to the first lady, now, now, Kailan, who say go get a statement, that is it now. That was an unfortunate statement from, from, from her, you know, very unfortunate for her, for sitting in continue indeed, you know, and um. I feel say, then people are, I, I know see Trip, we don't talk this, but the program, or we talk this, say. This woman needs somebody, when a script writer, where they write for her in speeches. They forget script, they forget somebody where they write for them, they forget somebody they write for them before you talk. It's not just her, anybody, we just grab for good talk, we touch it up, prepare for good talk, it is a kind of stupid thing there, they are up in Toronto. A judge the graph, a good talk things, and we get for affect them, and affect the country tomorrow. You know, I hope say, when don't, don't talk, it can go back and watch a video and learn from that. I hope say go to do that, you know, but one thing, I want grace alone, we get, all this talk, I would talk so, they, they, they right now, they listen to it. Then it, then the, then they laugh right now, who they talk, and it provoke when they laugh with, it's so many talks sense. But we know see, now one salon we get, we not get another contributor in concern, and I want grace alone that we get. Dear, the big people, if you the vote, vote on issue, no votes, because you not like this person, no vote, because you not like that person. Vote on issue, because tomorrow, guess what, they not get for get water, they not get for get lights, they not get for good hospital, because good hospital, nobody in that country, you see, you die. So no put anything the first now that country, have a good night.
Thank you very much, Mo. Who do I already talk to, please?
Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, uh, me and a man, a man, I see, I recall from.
Yes, Mana, you get three minutes, boss.
Dubai, Dubai Emirates, okay, thank you for giving the platform, you know, um, Trip, we did do great job for you, you know. I remember you, Tony and Arun. Well, I start this program, all of our contributions into this program, a really, 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 really balance. You see the contribution from off late, do, them people that who don't begin the ad, for me, they go to help and. And analyze the situation, where, where people are facing now salon, concerning politics. Most of the way they talk, they see the angle, where they come from. But like, with Tony can talk, you will really, really lose any time with Tony talk, you go no see, and then you talk for poli, for, for political party. Because in who, we all know very well, say, these two political party there, and they all destabilize the country, no matter how you shift for, for other people then. Now them to two political parties there, no, no good. So where Tony come, it talks straight to the, to the issues, when you come for analyze issue. Uh, and to pre, you just go straight to the, to the issues. Where Arun, the time where Arun they come on contributions, when we not start this program, when they do, when they start out with the issues. But now this, all these people there are only try for let them say they contribute for a program. You will really see see, they go left the program and begin to focus on political party issues, and that, that after the issue, we get this full on for. At least we know all the, we know all the problems in this forum, we know what people are facing, we know who that are the people that would deploy the country. Okay, let's see if they bring politics inside, S A P P, A P C. No party, no, S A P, no, eh, A P C party not lead that country there, in the absence of diaspora, now so so diaspora they do it. So we the good, they they feed the country warfully, we, S A P P kind of power, now whether they good in, now so so eh, 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 diaspora they do it. Where they good in, who, who deny, who they see the poor and the all, at the end, they really don't give the project, now they, now they feed the country warfully. They would take the money, they dissponsor back, now America or wherever they stay. So, you know, sometimes, when one of they give analysis. Tony, they can't give analysis, they really no see, yes, Tony get the country attack, you know, they, you know, they backing S A P P or another A P C. Now they, they talk straight to the point, straight to what they happen. He already don't know see, he don't capacity, there any side way he go, he will leave. He don't tell you say, the middle manpower is very, very weak in a salon, and there is no way, no way this country will go before we people and they. We don't know you do nothing, they just smile for the, behind people that bad, bribe body, bribe body. You know, they walk, he's in, that's how I won, I do, you know, they walk so, you go for go walk. And before you walk, you go for capacity, what you make the, the, the Arab country then, you know, people they travel, they defend and difficult, you know. For the Arab, they help you, for let you grow fast, it not easy, if you not already grew up for Musa, you don't come out. It not easy for them to grow fast, the Asians and the girl mentality, when you do, when you do work with them. When you work with them, they no see, he very much brilliant, he want for improve, they they hate you straight off, they not go ever teach you. They never teach you, it not like America, where did somebody say, he brilliant, you know, when I do work, he draw, you want to say, somebody who, yeah, we just have a work now, so. The person automatically, obviously, he don't lost intuition. Because even the can, even as the Asians, you know, you know, you know, you know, he lazy, you know, he will do better work. Then you, 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 you body, then you get the mentality, you, you use it, you bring, then if you don't see, you don't accept, automatically, they don't lost the job, so then the whole thing that they make. Filipino, if you do work with Philippines, we in a head of, before you, you know, they ever train you, you work with eh, eh, Pakistan. We in a head of before you, you know, they ever train you, you work with, you work eh, eh, Indian, we in a head before you, you know, they ever train you. Because you, you don't know, immediately, you don't know, you don't get ahead of them. So if we country, people they go with, eh, people they go with projects then, they go with companies then, at least, what the people, what the governments, and therefore they try for they do. They didn't try for the, talk to, they forget about this, um, this eh, eh, higher, higher taxes on those company. They didn't try for build the capacity of the middle manpower in the country, no matter how situation is, it will most be less, if the job can. They able, they, they, they able fit the job, they good it, you, you know, we go get that policy, they, we then can, they able employ them, that in this country. The managerial personnel, their country, I know company that you come out outside, you can't, and it's content, my young post, we not to, we not the need by, by the, the locals in this country. They not even less settle for less, they not go ever work for small, 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 small job there. They always, they they provide the managerial posts for the, for the people there. So where one of the talk on issue, now, now this, this forum, I can really admire one of the discussions. But some people, they really can, really, now this party, party business, you see, the, we even say, where they analyze, see, they, they, they see the, the, the bitterness, where they get for a single person. A single person, of which are to, you know, the only person we, we contribute to all this problem. Now a whole lot of people from diaspora, now they in our government, they not able do nothing. And now what is the kind for people that would, they don't do nothing, as I know, they don't know nothing, they may read, they may, they not travel one day, but we already know, within, within the day and the world. But they then give the opportunity, you know, they, you know, they prove it to the people, they, they, now the same people that back, who they deny are back, and they sit on it, they see. Now, the government, the leader of the president, the president, you know, all them they are, you know, good, the we say set change, you are teaching, who would, and now people that they run after Samura Kamara. After we, now their money, we don't put in the first ninety they put. So I didn't really appreciate the program from analysis side, but some people in the, at least, oh, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the politics, they are to talk straight to the, to the issues. Don't forget about this, but I, no more, Tony, they analyze, I say, they analyze, aside eh, eh, Arun before, Arun really analyze, so I, I don't know. They will just talk to them, made them, made them make closer satisfied, not to, they your political party, they will can this it to now, yeah.
All right, thank you, Mana. Yes, caller, who do I already talk to, please?
Yeah, Trip, thank you very much, this time, Ahmed, I.
Ahmed, you get three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, in the first place, I want for tell the team very much thank you, uh, the analysts there, and then they do very great job. Um, from a free, actually, we don't they follow you for quite a while, but mostly except, eh, especially to uh, Mister Omar. Sometimes I, I really like way they come in and all which it is, since when I begin listening this program, each time it contributes. You know, it really make a lot of sense, you see say, you know, people can get the country attacked, and they talk out of experience, and they really they point out what they happen. I like people always say some of their facts, and some of we, the reason why we get so much passionate about this country, we, we grew in the place, during in the war times, so of course. We grew within, within the war, as in the end, at least we don't grow up, we get sense, we don't pass through some of them, the leader like, then come out from that, and then now to now. When they see what they go, when they compare the differences, you know, the mistake what we do, Trip, as a nation. Is from what we look at somebody, we not get the capacity for making rule a country, now in the affect we so today. And the people in back, where we trust, where of course they for, and you know, take governance and look at certain areas them, certain disciplines, and where they see they not professional. They, they necessarily, they know, they go back for fail, we warfully, this is not a problem. And just like what Mister Omar say, actually, in this government, if we, if we stand a very big chance for making turn things around, we shall be don't come on now. But again, all of them blame games them, try for muscle, muscle people them, muscle, muscle other areas them. Pass laws them, pass laws the way, actually, for no means, they just want for enrich themselves, for making, for making they able, you know, gain, you know, you know, you know, gain something in governance system. Because all of them P R system, they will put them, they talk, con, con, condemn, some they are against, we don't, you don't debate, and in fact, before take part into the program. Will you see how this thing ever come today, and now today people start for talk. All of them, she are with, with international bodies, they condemn, we, we, what, what are the people who are in the country now, we the see now, what we follow every day. Now the fact, they not, they not hate anybody, they not hate any particular party, but now what's in the happening in reality, go to the Paralympia road. Look at boys, young boys, juvenile, they did it, now prison, for no reason, some of them now, just a minor stuff, they put it in the lock, they need. People come up protest some day, for what they hold, and even the C C F, see them get justice, or they get lawyer, no. So you know, I then see, they they talk, when the police and come, then come to this, and come, no, people they see, you know, but all, all the lead to this, all now leadership. You know, but all, what you need to this, all now leadership, if the leadership not get focused, you know, in the, not then tell they happen. People talk, it is, it is shut them down, recently, just in friend, we come over Belgium. As Lanna Lungu, they get some, because as more the blogger, uh, in the chat with somebody, when, uh, 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 S A P P blogger stuff, he say, we which they come between there. In guy, the guy come, they good alumni, I host, police invited, they listen, I lonely, they take his passport, they parack, you just imagine that. Just because he says something, or he point something at Facebook, some, somebody pick up, and go report that. Then, then go for go take a, I host, as you learn, then go take a, I host, can I go to the, I listen, I lonely, I think I'm doing, when you show in Belgium passports. Then talk to any, I think, at the end of the day, at eleven, let me be on that, you can't imagine that. So all of them see there, people not for talk, some of whom you go do to the, as long as they not see, they, they talk, they, they see things right, they, they, they target you. This is wrong, you know, people go for gets the fear mind to say things, and many express themselves, allow the people for talk. When you allow the people for talk, one of the greatest, we talk about, maybe we young, we talk about, and they sing music, and they say this. So you allow people, you know, people, they do things, as, of course, we get sense, now we see. So, you know, that's enough frustration, people say are out, so they know, you can't do that, no more in Syralem today. You know, so people accept you belong, otherwise, you're gonna put yourself into problem. So, you know, so these are the things, but when, we don't, we do a very big mistake, if you don't take somebody who in a technocrat. Somebody who in a governance system, for rule a country, now a problem, this are people who, who the midday are UK now, what are, where are they doing? Noted much, and these are the guys today, they go away, they live like council homes, now they go, they see they go govern governments, a whole nation. Look how, how we, we end up now, today, Tripoli, as I they talk to you now, the pounds is like two million five hundred thousand. Just some, a week back, is about two million four, four hundred or so, for something, imagine now, I just check now, that's, it's for two million five hundred thousand. They don't take bank governor, the other one, the able solve this problem, no, the economy is down, the people are suffering. This is a fast movement, if we know we get big family, we know how we take, see somebody in a village, you not get nothing, what about the one in Africa? So what about the guy who say, who don't get government job, we in a, in family, most of them, little thing, they won't get the resources for making investment to inform, how they survive? These are the things show we the talk, it's not about the airport, go and build this airport, what's the issue that? Go and make the, the people in living, the, 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 the economy, this is what they, it's the common man. The man will not go school, now that we the talk today, but these guys, they get all things wrong. May God help no more, at least may God, who try for be wise enough, and bring in somebody, we will change things round, but these governments, they failed us. They failed, hopefully, they can't change nothing, and we're not gonna have anything good from these people, and that's my meaning, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Ahmed. Ahmed, our last caller. Somebody called earlier, but I don't know if the person is still available. Ahmed, our last caller. Yeah? We go there back. On Monday, tomorrow we join A Y V on Sunday, then I think say, Gama School get Thanksgiving, we go try for stream, um. And, uh. Now, now Saloon, on Saturdays, we get past, as long as you know, cause person, we get past, also Saturday day now. Yeah? Everybody get rights to an opinion, nobody not get monopoly overweight in person this in there, even Sierra, they talk no, and does nobody in statement. We create a platform for make, Sierra Leonians then come and share ideas. Hmm? We will not get for the one side. As long as it's the good of the country, the good of Sierra Leone, that's what we want. Yeah? Okay. Politics, look, did they will be they talk about water. I'm not supposed in, eh, eh, chance to be building, we count them back, to do the rest, no see then they. New airport, eh. Eh, that he got, now they go no more, yeah? Hmm. Uh. I tell us, everybody get right to an opinion, but when somebody try for express their opinion and call you idiot. My brother, we try. And then they will not see, everybody get right to opinion now. Hmm. Go there back Monday, yeah? Like I said, Gama School Thanksgiving, A Y V on Sunday. Go there. We camera go ready for capture. Things in there we, we know, deal with, next week, it's a promise, we recall them. We recall them, yeah? Till we meet again. On Monday. Hey, tomorrow, wow, tomorrow Leon Star get game. That's where, where the chairman? Not too good. We the can, where Leon Star they perform, or not they beat? Eh, just, eh, eh, Saloon up a hype, Saloon up a hype, Leon Star not they win, we then draw, we gladly. We then not score, are we, we gladly. Eh? Yes, well, if we win now, I die. Yes. No, ah, you, all man, we don't the following, I, they know, the relationship with me to me and Leon Star, so now make can he talk again? Uh, man, the roots Leon Star now, now they go no more. But, my hopes, haha. Leon Star draw, my hopes not crush, Leon Star loss, my hopes not crush. Leon Star, win, my hopes not crush, eh? Okay. Seriously. The man say now, on a Sunday night, say, yes, yes, yes. More can was it tell Leon Star, now all Saloon problem on it, so seriously. Eh, seriously, do. Ah, Leon Star, I not talk against them, or let possibly not can say this, I talk against Leon Star, but yeah. Eh, for the green, white, and blue, they support someone, now where they go. I seen I then picking the way you know see this, eh, they not come for football, but they tower, say, they say, boy, Ronaldino, eh? Hmm. Okay. Alright. Then say they do a move, they not give we the official. Eh, all man now, they pick what he they show. Eh? They not give we the official list, they give the player list, they not give official list, because now where the player list and the official list can come, eh? So each player get one official logo time, and say now. They be supposed for go Parliament, for go answer, so if I say in a Parliament, go tell, they say, it's too stupid, why not for they put the official list? Eh, not for put official list, now just put the player list. Parliament. Now, so it be, eh, now I tell, tell them, you don't put official list, they just put player list. Because now, 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 call, send call, and they not give official list again. Can I ask Kino who go qualify? Okay, me not say let them not qualify you. You know, you have a talk just, I do they. But my hopes, mm-mm, I do then take go. We skip then, keep the list. I say now, who they pull this, I made it, they talk about we, now they not pull this, nobody not getting for talk. Eh, Saloon a place, boo, eh, I beg, tomorrow we watch there. We watch there, but when I go catch, I see, we not, we not normal, we not go the pull list, the people that they talk, we not still we pull. Who we not not pull, anybody they can ask, we not, nobody need can ask, we not say who the list, we not for pull the list pa upa, we not pull her. And they say, oh, we attention not be one day, but we not pull her, when I decide, we decide so. I tell I say, they support them, but, but in the left hand, eh, brother, what they do? Tomorrow, they are back. Uh, who they are, okay, till we meet again. No, go there tomorrow, I go, I go come, they have time showing, they will go do small thing, yeah, till we meet again tomorrow, or on Sunday. With Leon Star, I say, ta ta.